Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and this is October 2nd of 2025. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We have a hearing tonight. Let's just quickly approve the agenda.
What do we approve the agenda?
Okay, so second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yep, do we have a discussion item?
Okay.
Just because I motioned, it doesn't mean I liked what we had on it. I have two things. One, the, we had mentioned in the minutes the last time that we were going to discuss the town plan grant, and that's not on the agenda, so I thought that that should be added.
Okay, I was gonna put that in announcements, but...
Okay, and then, given the fact that we have a hearing, I was wondering if the hearing should actually appear right under the approval of the agenda. It really doesn't matter as opposed to new business because the hearing is separate.
We can do that before public comment.
Before public comment.
Okay. All right, who seconded?
I did, and I'll second that also.
I will just make, revise my motion to say as amended.
Any further discussion? All is in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, let's open the hearing. On a boundary line adjustment, the Baird and Levens parcels on McKinley Avenue. Welcome back. Now, what's, what's new?
What I have for tonight, I know where it was noticed, notices were given to the neighbors to be here for the second half of those proceeding, and last time there was talk about a drawing that would be, that would show both parcels, and so Mark Porcell, Porcell for surveying, has done that, and I've got three large copies, and maybe if I put one here, one there, and one there, we can all look around. Thank you. I've tried to put this on a copier and made little copies, pass it all together.
I can use this one.
Work.
Okay, I'll take this one.
You're just assuming.
Hmm? Oh, we can get over there.
A share?
Yep. I'm putting McKinley at the bottom. Okay.
So...
Okay, this is a public hearing.
The whole thing? No, this...
If you want to just preface...
This was the original parcel.
What, what you're, summarize what you're doing.
Thank you. So, the proposal is that there is a parcel that is approximately fourteen acres, that's in hash marks, kind of going from top right to bottom left. And it's the creek, East Creek is the boundary on the, on the top, northwesterly of that parcel. And the, so that's identified as lot number one. And you'll see that there's kind of, on the western side of the left hand of that drawing, there's a a line that kind of zigzags back to the south. And just to the left of that, there is hash marks that go from the other direction, from top left to bottom right. And that is the piece of property that currently is a joint parcel 2A, which has no hash marks to the left of that. So, the boundary line that we're proposing is that line that goes from the corner of the creek in a southerly direction, from the top of the page to the bottom. And then, it's identified, even at this big page, it's, I think, forty-seven minutes, forty-four seconds, if I'm reading that correctly.
Forty-seven degrees.
Yeah, forty-seven degrees, forty-four minutes, and then...
Forty-five.
The forty-five.
Should have marked with this. But it matches the boundary line of house lots that are along McKinley align, McKinley, McKinley Avenue, excuse me, between the, in the lands of Perry Gibbs. That leaves a 5.12 acre parcel. That was a seven, I believe, point eight-nine acre parcel, so approximately two, two-point-six acres is then added if this boundary line adjustment is approved to those lands of Francis Levens, which is that fourteen acre lot. Carol Baird is the owner of that parcel. That is, the boundary line adjustment goes through. And she is currently marketing that five-point-one-two acre lot for sale.
Jim, a quick, a quick question. I see the park parcels identified, parcel A, 5.12, parcel B, 2.68, but I do not see the Francis Levens parcel labeled or with a with a acreage.
Acreage, yeah, it's missing the acreage, it was labeled.
Yeah.
It's labeled as what?
Lands of Francis Levens?
No, I understand that, I'm just wondering whether there's a parcel name to it, or whether the...
Hooking page.
Yeah.
The books was originally... I have other, other maps that identify that. It was known as parcel, lot one of parcel one in an old North Standard map. And in my folder, I have the previous map. That, that I'm actually...
I won't be disappeared.
They're just getting rid of this one, isn't it?
Yeah, adding that one and getting rid of that one.
This is Baird.
Yeah, I don't know.
Parcel 2A is Carol Baird, is that right? Parcel 2A there to your left, under your left hand.
It is, more was before.
That Carol, Carol Baird.
2A is what?
Carol Baird, that's my question. Is that Carol Baird?
Yeah, she, she still owns, yeah, she still owns that, yeah.
Right, right.
Is there anyone here to speak about this boundary line adjustment? Here, in person or online? As far as neighbors or public?
This is, uh... This is an old map. This was the map that was done by Standard. There's another, this was approved by the board back in 2008. And here is that parcel, so it was fourteen point four acres.
Yep.
And it was lot one of parcel one.
I thought I had seen it in a previous iteration or in a letter or something, and I was just surprised when I couldn't find the reference on here.
And we do have, I have a map that Mark Porcell did of that, of that parcel.
Okay.
One of the previous, there was a lot of boundary line adjustment that was over here. There was that part, that was part of the house lot.
So this is going to fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, this is going, this will be approximately seventeen acres, or is it on there?
Exactly.
I don't see it on there.
There's sixteen point seven-two.
But that's not right, is it?
Sixteen.
The...
So it's the parcel of this lot.
Okay, um, any?
Okay, sixteen point nine-two.
But it's drawing it all being...
Any questions?
That's, this is fourteen acres, and this is six, this is two acres, that's maybe sixteen, not sixteen, that's one. So they're gonna be...
So the acreage for the current Levens property, is that the one you're talking about, that sixteen? I don't see it on there.
Currently, it's not marked, it's supposed to be fourteen and some.
Okay, okay.
And Jim showed me on the, another map. There's a math issue on the, on the letter.
Right, and here's just, there's the map that Porcell did earlier. And he identified it as thirteen point four acres.
Okay, well then, the letter that was submitted last time, Barbara?
August 8th, 2025, that's the...
Well, no, no, last time meaning last meeting or last...
Yeah.
The, the math in there does not correspond to either the map or the other map, or the map that's here.
Okay, we've got an issue there. Anyone else want to speak to the hearing?
It appears that...
As opposed to our decision, our deliberations?
It appears that the parcel shown as 2B, which is two point...
Two point six-eight.
Six-eight, is going, is going to become part of the bigger parcel.
Right.
Right?
That's correct.
So, right now, we're looking at two separate parcels, but shouldn't there be a dash line or something? It's supposed to be just one parcel when you get done, isn't it? You're, you're creating one parcel?
That's correct, right.
But yeah, he's trying to show the, what they're taking, I think, from here, add it to there.
But, but it's not clear what the one parcel is, that's the... The total, and it's not clear what the, what the current Francis Levens parcel is. Now, I, I want to make a comment going back to our previous approval of boundary line adjustment. Some amount of land was added, I believe. It was supposed to be a swap, but I don't think it was a a zero-sum swap. I think there was some difference in the, the total amount, just a fraction. But that may be why one map is fourteen point something, and the other map is thirteen, or thirteen point something.
That we did previous, next to what's his name? Whitehead.
There was like an elbow or something.
That's right, that was added on.
Yep.
So that's why that's changed from the standard survey. And normal procedure is, we had the map that you had at the original hearing, it just had lands of Francis Levens, because that's already been conveyed. So we don't practice putting parcels that have already been conveyed, putting the acreages on them. But I understand Howard wanted to see the differences, that's why I created this new plan and showed the different hatching of the existing Francis Levens parcel, and what he's, the 2B, which he's picking up.
My, my point would be similar to Howard's, because the letter doesn't show the right map. And so I have an issue when the letter, it does not accurately reflect
Correlate with the...
Correlate with the parcel as it currently exists on the, on the plat in terms of Levens' current land, and what is being added to it. The math just doesn't add up, and I, I find that to be a clerical deficit, and if you're trying to, trying to match the description to the land, you can't.
Okay, okay. I'm inclined to close the hearing and get into, getting more into deliberations now. Any other general questions? Okay, we'll close the hearing.
I have just one question. Is there a plot on the other side of East Creek River that's owned by Carol as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to look at the ArcGIS map and trying to make heads or tails of it, and just using that as a reference tool, that's why I just wanted to confirm, that is another plot, that's hers. That's all shown as her plot, all right.
Yeah, and I think it's that twenty-five acre parcel on Route 7.
Okay, so that's twenty-five, and that's, the total's like fifty-one and a half, so that makes sense then, so, all right.
Pretty good, I think garden time is there, and yeah, that's, yeah.
So since there isn't any other public here, we'll skip over that and go into the deliberations of this request for boundary line adjustment. We have an issue with the numbers in the letter. We also have a question. We understand that this parcel, the 5.12 acre lot has been on the market for a couple weeks. I'd really like to talk to our town council about the appropriateness of that before the boundary line adjustment was approved.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can tell you that I've spoken with that realtor.
Is it in error?
She's a, I'm sorry?
Is it in error? Was it something that was advertised improperly, or premen...
No, she's done it, I, I've said to her that this cannot be obviously sold, or without approval of the town first. And what she said is that I, I have some people who are interested in property in Rutland Town. I know that it can't, that no contract can be drawn until this, this issue is resolved. But I can say to them that there's a planning board meeting coming up on October 2nd. I know she's said that to people, that's what she's told me, she's said to people. And so, nothing's been, nothing's...
And, and so what happens if we delay our vote tonight because of the issues here?
Yeah, and I...
Is she under instructions to put it on the market tomorrow?
She has a sign out there now, and there have been people who have been interested in it, who she has talked to. But with the condition that nothing can happen until this board decides on whether to grant the boundary line adjustment or not.
What does the group think about these developments?
I don't, I don't...
I don't see a problem with it.
No?
No, none. They can't convey it, so I, I just don't see the issue.
Okay, what about the letter?
The pardon?
What about the letter and the numbers?
Again, the letter is the letter, I mean, it's the plat that matters. The plat is what's going into the record, not the letter.
You could always think of that.
If the plat is inaccurate, we have to correct it.
I, I mean, I am not an expert, you're talking about my letter. And I, if I made a mistake there, I, I apologize, and I would defer to the surveyor to get the accurate information about that. That's why we wanted him here tonight. He's drawn the previous, he'll go, you know, and he'll be on the land, and his expertise to come up with the right, the right dimensions and size.
I haven't seen the letter, so...
I should have given it to you before I...
Before we got here.
So, property above that one's for sale too.
I, I had...
Everything.
Talking about bad parcels?
Uh, the twenty-five acres on the other side of East Creek is also...
That's owned by Baird. That is part of the Baird lands, Carol Baird?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all I was asking. That's what I thought you meant by...
They said Baird land, I'm like, bear, like, is...
No, with a D.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. That's what I thought you were saying.
I, I thought we, we were asking for a, a plant that would show the final, that we could look at and see, here's, here's the final picture.
Here is...
Yeah, and this, this is not exactly that.
It's insufficient, at least from my perspective, it's, it's...
Yes, because part of the final is going in, I mean, it's broken up into two pieces.
Right, one of which is identified in terms of acreage, the other which is not.
Right.
The other land was also land that we had approved a boundary line adjustment for. And based on the information that we had back in, I don't know, January, February. And I, I, I remember, or at least I think I remember having the same issue with the math. I like the math to add up, I don't like the math to be all over the place.
So, I agree with that.
Yeah.
My, my question was, do we want, even if we had the number here and the numbers added up?
Yep.
We would have, it would be represented as two pieces.
Yep.
And is that what we want, or do we want both?
I thought we asked last time, Howard, to make it one contiguous.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, one contiguous parcel, is what we were asking for, so that we don't have two parcels here, so a parcel could be sold. I mean, it's, you know, perhaps at a dash line or something between the the changes coming on, or something to show that, that it's, to show the one big parcel, and, and to put the acreage on it, whatever it is, the total acreage. Where the... Could be done in a dialogue box too, over on the side, and say that parcel...
2B.
Parcel 2B and 2A are then combined into one parcel.
I thought we were following the instructions in that, I mean, what this map shows is that everything that is hatched is going to be one parcel, and the directions are just different to differentiate what's new. So you have before you what the new parcel looks like. It, it's all the hatched area. And that's the prior parcel Levens and part of that, that other parcel, that's seven point eight-nine acres originally.
A dialogue, a dialogue box could say that.
Right, yeah.
The dialogue box said that...
Lines are not gonna change.
Then it would make it, then it would make it totally clear to anyone that's looking at this precisely what, because it's not a hundred percent clear, I don't think, to someone who just looks at this right off the bat right now. Especially since there's no, because then you could have the parcel size for this one, the parcel size for that one, and say, this is the total parcel size, and then it would be completely clear.
Right, that was my point earlier, Andy, because that does not match the description in the letter, nor does it match the previous map that had the parcel size for the Levens plot, but I think that that was because that was the Levens parcel prior to the adding of the elbow, but I, I don't know that for a fact. 2B, you know, 2B is here.
So, do we...
But it would be clearer if we had the current acreage as it currently exists, and the resulting acreage as it will exist once parcel 2B at 2.68 acres is added to the Levens parcel.
But I guess the question is, do we want, does the whole group want to see that on the next plat? Or do we go ahead with this project and make sure it's on the MYLAR?
Being on the MYLAR, meaning having, having a, a box explaining?
Right, yes, yes, we're talking about, either way, the dialogue box gets put in.
So, I, I just, I just want to know.
We're discussing.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the dialogue box. As long as it explains everything, it has all the detail in.
And the parcel size needs to be added to the...
I'd like to see another draft personally, before we do anything.
I'll go along with that too.
I would too.
Yeah, let's, it's time is of the essence.
Would it help if that line that's putting these two of these together was a dash line or something? It looks like, it's a, it looks like it's a property line. It shows the pins and everything.
Existing property line, but maybe we could do a dash with that to show the existing property line versus what the proposed is gonna be, and then outline the entire border with a thicker line to show that that's gonna be the new plot, the new plot with combining the two lots.
We put in a dash line, then that takes away from the fact that that fourteen acres has been conveyed to Francis Levens. That's already...
Maybe not a dash line, maybe some other kind of line that we could say...
I really don't know how I can make this
Clearer?
Any clearer
Okay.
than what I've got right now.
So we'll stick with the dialogue box?
Does, do, and what I propose, the dialogue box, does that make sense to you? Yeah, I, I think that'll clarify it for everybody.
The only thing that won't be clarified is the current acreage of the Francis Levens.
That would have to be added also.
Right, yeah. To the...
Right on the, right.
Yep. And then, there's a reference in the dialogue box that says that by adding parcel 2B at 2.68 acres to the Francis Levens parcel of lands at whatever acreage then results in a final amount, which then could go into the letter and be accurate, rather than be confutled. Yeah.
Is there any other comments?
That, no. It still seems to me like we didn't, the fact that the, what's gonna be the old property is gonna be, is here now, when you look at it. In six months, when we look at this, if we pick up and look at it, it looks like three, it looks like three lots. Maybe if just all the, the
New lots.
Lines were consistent with the, the, the lot that's being transferred, and the final, and the lot that's already there, if they all had the same
Orientation?
Same lines, pardon?
Can't do that. It's been conveyed, it's separate. I can't combine them on a map. That's even more confusing.
Right, because you have two parcels right now. You have parcel 2B plus Francis Augie's, Augie's parcel.
Right.
And so you have to show that those are two different parcels at, at the point where you're asking for permission to adjust the boundary line to the north-south line that will separate parcel 2A from parcel 2B. Correct? It's just a, it's a diagonal line going from East Creek down to McKinley, or almost to the...
Arlington.
Yeah.
I understand. Do you understand?
Is there a motion, or more discussion?
I, I need a little explanation. I don't understand, it's being conveyed and not conveyed, and, and that's something I probably should understand, so could you, could we just go through why what that implication is? And let, let me say it another way, if, if in six months we pick this up, do we, should we know that one of these has been conveyed before the other? Is that what?
Chairman, I think what, I think what they're saying is that Augie... Well, Francis Levens. The lines that go like this, as Jim explained it, from northeast to southwest, the big parcel is, has already been approved as it exists by us.
I understand, I understand. Okay, and?
And that the parcel 2B currently belongs to Baird as part of parcel two.
Okay, but we're not talking about now, we're talking about having the final, the final map is what we want, isn't it? Six months, this will, let's say this is closed, in six months, we want, I mean, is there any value in having that, the plot that's being the boundary line that was moved indicated here? Is there any value in that?
Howard, you want to?
That's a question.
Well, other than just to see where, to see where it was. But it could, again, it could be shown with a different style line or something too. To, it just showed that it's within the total new parcel.
And this is after everything's been conveyed, we, we're talking about, so...
Well, after everything's been conveyed, then the only boundary line will be from parcel 2A to Francis Levens land. Yeah.
Okay. That would be, that's not the way it is now, but that...
Yes, well, it is.
That's not the only, it's not the only, you said the only property line that would be shown with...
Correct. The only line in six months will be the line that divides parcel 2A from the rest of...
But we're talking about this being the final plot, aren't we? So this, it'll be like this in six months, and it will just like this. The meaning may be different, but we're talking about this looking the same.
I don't think the surveyor can do that, because you have to convey the current lot from Francis Levin, and then the sec, the lot being separated out.
In six months, if that's been done, in six months, that's over. Do we need, do we need...
We would need a revised sheet showing what the new lot is of Francis Levin.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what...
Yeah, yeah, so this here is the intermediate one, once they get everything approved, then they can provide us with the final.
I thought this was the final.
This is the final, I guess, to get approval to...
There's gonna be a, a description in the corner that you should change, describe about lots A and B are, are one. And, and anybody who buys, who wants to buy the other parcel that's left, we can do a title search and see, you know, what are the lines that actually define this parcel? And these are gonna be the lines that are on the survey that you have in front of you, that those are the lines. And there will be a, a written verbal description of, you know, starting on a, a pin on McKinley. And it's going, so many minutes of...
You don't have more information?
I think all the more reason for us to, to have another, to look at the next version before we...
Well, this is the proposed, right? So this is what they're proposing. It's not until they actually, until we approve it, can they provide us the final where they've shown.
That's what we're actually discussing right now.
We, we want this, we want the final to be also we can see it, that's what we're saying.
All right, so we want to see the final.
We're making the final decision on it.
Yeah. They're just trying to keep, keep...
They're just trying to keep, keep everything as clear as you possibly can, it, it helps to, you know, make sure it's a survey plot is. Is clear, as, as, as it can possibly be, and so if there's any way we can improve it to make it better so that it all understand it. It's would be uh.
It could be a motion in itself and we could leave it up to you folks.
I don't know how I can make it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think it can be any clearer.
Fifty years, I don't know how I can make it clear. We can't show it as one piece to Francis Levens, cause that two and whatever acres has not been conveyed yet. So legally, I can't put that on a map.
Right.
And put that on a Mylar when it hasn't even been conveyed.
Right.
So my hands are tied and I don't know how much clearer. Maybe we get a copy of the original Francis Levens boundary line with that elbow added on. That's where the acreage is, that you wanna put one of those in your file. Show.
That's been recorded.
That's recorded.
Yeah.
That's, there's a Mylar of that.
And, and that's the same description that, that you used to create this map.
Correct.
That's the same outline.
With the adjustment in the previous um approval.
Right. That's, that's the current state of that piece of property.
The, the total acreage of the parcel when you get it all done. Is that, I don't see it on here, whatever it is, I mean, there, there is, when you get all done, there is a total acreage of this whole thing, is it on here somewhere?
There's a previous Mylar of the original Francis Levens, that's already on file, that's fourteen whatever acres. I shouldn't need to put that on another plan. That's already in the vault. I can put it on, as you suggested, you want me to put that off on the side on the margin somewhere? That the Francis Levin parcel is fourteen blah 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 and the additional two point whatever will be added on.
Which will make a total of X.
Yeah, I can do that, but.
Lines aren't gonna change.
Lines aren't.
No, no.
Okay, yeah, which, what we've been talking about for two minutes now. So I guess our choice is, do. Do we approve this? Contingent on those changes being made in the Mylar? Or do we wanna see another plot?
And if it's just the, a text box that they're adding and they know exactly what is going on it, I don't see why we would need to see it. Other than whoever's, you know, Bill or you, whoever approves the final. And then the same with, we could request a new letter with updated or corrected acres.
That would.
Do, right?
Well, it, right now, that letter is not accurate.
Right.
That's what I'm gonna say, I mean, that's, that's clear. So for me, we, we, I like things to be consistent and if you cross-reference, it's clear. There's no ambiguity, right now, there's ambiguity between the letter and uh the plot. I think Andy's idea is great, put a text box up, say, the Francis Levens parcel. As denoted by the lines going in X direction is um Y amount of acreage. When added to the parcel that has the diagonal lines going in the opposite direction. Of two point six eight acres transferred from Carol Baird, the Levens parcel will now be Z. Acreage, then that should be described in the letter accurately. And then I don't have a problem.
Well, let's have them come back in in three weeks with that, right, you wanna look at it?
Think we should be.
I, I, I would, I would, I would prefer, because when I've made motions in the past. Upon contingent, contingent upon uh something being done. We have found that that has been omitted or it hasn't been done the way it was supposed to. And I'm not talking about this group, I'm just talking about.
Just in German.
Right, so I would not make a contingent motion myself and I would not support a contingent motion.
I, I would. I, I think the, it, it would be better if we could put in writing. And, and give it to them, uh, and then based on what, what's returned. We will review based on, we've written the changes to be.
I think we should decide what we wanna do and, and have these folks. How to, and then we really need to work on, I think, our housekeeping as far as what.
Yeah.
We're gonna require from anybody on the lot line adjustment in the future, so we can, we can put it out there and have them know precisely what we want.
Right, and that's part of our task, as we will review the subdivision ordinance, so, I mean, that makes sense.
So.
I'm gonna move, move, we delay approval and, and have a, another hearing in three weeks.
Is there a second?
Second. It's just for discussion.
I don't see where the letter is wrong. You're talking about. You said it was. We have the letter here.
He's got it now.
Thirteen point four acres.
What's that?
In the letter that, that uh was submitted with. Plans.
Yep.
Um, references thirteen point four acres. Now, you were saying something about fourteen or?
The map that, the, that Jim showed me. Added to two point six eight did not add up to what you had on the letter. And there is no indication on um Francis Levens uh. Uh parcel right now that allows us to verify the sum of the two parcels accurately.
This letter talks about thirteen. Point one, two, thirteen point four. And the additional piece that's gonna go to Augie.
Two point six eight.
What's the total?
Eight. And fourteen, thirteen, four.
That's sixteen and change.
Correct. That's what it shows here on the letter. Jim has a copy of the Mylar that's filed. Showing thirteen point four acres, that's what Augie got in this last conveyance.
Thirteen, thirteen point four and two point six eight is fifteen point seven two. That's ma, mental math in my head.
Thirteen point four plus two point six eight, sixteen point oh eight.
Oh, sixteen point oh eight, sorry, I, I, I went six, I thought it was thirteen point oh, my, my bad.
Sorry. No, I just.
Yeah, no, no, I, I didn't have a calculator and I, I moved the decimal point.
Seven o'clock at night, it's understood.
So again, the letter's right.
Alright, okay, my bad, my mental math with listening to uh numbers being thrown out. Alright, so if the letter's right and the acreage is right.
Andy, you wanna revise your motion?
Two.
To just, we'd like to look at another plot. With, with the text box dialogue box and just take another look.
Do we want the acreage on?
And the acreage should be on that.
Or in the box?
No, the acreage should be on, in the, in the, in the, in the parcel itself, the way that, that is on the other parcels. And the parcel should be labeled, right?
That parcel doesn't have a one A on it, does it?
No.
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 No, no, it does not.
Right.
Alright, I usually rely on Dana to make these motions.
You can withdraw your motion and.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I, I screwed up on the math, I'm not making a motion, I'm bad math.
My motion is to have them, to have the, you know, to bring in the, the plot the next meeting and we'll review it. And we've given them all the instruction we can. Or, and maybe I'll try it again. Um, I'll move that we uh withhold approval of, of this current lot line adjustment. Uh, contingent on dialogue box being added to the, to the plot.
Yep.
That uh specifies the, how the parcels are going to be configured. And also that the acreage size needs to be added uh to what will be labeled as plot one A.
Second, was, is that you?
No, that was me.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll um second Andy's uh amended motion.
Okay, there's a.
I, I, I. I don't think it's really clear what, what we're asking for. Well, I mean, it's clear, I just don't think everything's been.
Yeah, I really think it'll be pretty clear, you have a dialogue box here that'll say. Parcel one A and parcel two B will be combined, parcel A will, this will say. So many acres, we know how many acres this is, this will be the total parcel, so it'll be pretty.
And this will say parcel B?
This will say parcel one, I believe. Uh, but they could label it anyway, I mean, it wouldn't really matter, and that parcel two A will be. You know, this many acres. And it'll be as totally clear.
Can we send them home with a copy marked up how we want it? So that way it's clear, so when they come in next time, it's not any ambiguity and then.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You need that, you like that?
Yeah, no, that way we don't come back here next week, oh, you forgot this, or three weeks from now, I just wanna make sure that the direction we give them. They're able to go ahead, take care of that, get it done, and then bring back what we've asked for. And so we make sure what we asked for is documented, is what we asked for. I think that's the most clean forward way moving forward, just make it efficient, get it done with.
Bill, can we assign that to you?
Sure.
Okay, so there is a motion, you did second, a second.
I, I seconded the amended motion, yes, I did.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? That was unanimous. Sherman still hasn't.
I just don't, I, I really don't, I don't think it's clear, I, I understand, we know what's gonna be done. But I'm not sure that, that anywhere, things that we want is in one person's mind.
It should have been in Andy's second motion, which will show up in the minutes.
Okay.
Which.
Right, was with a dialogue box.
It, it will, but they don't have the minutes and they're the ones who are gonna be doing this. And, and that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna mark up one of these.
Yeah.
I think we're good. Okay.
Ten point four, that gets you.
Yeah.
Oh, nine two.
No, but isn't that plus or minus, I mean, it's two point six acres, it'll be two point seven, you know, it's not exactly down to a. Where, I mean, what if it's two point eight, four, five, six, you know, I mean, there's some rounding to it. Right, cause it's forty-three thousand in an acre, so, yeah.
Sure, but my math in my head.
Yeah, yeah.
When I wasn't looking at these numbers or this, was that that wasn't the same. So, I mean, if you're gonna put it in oh nine two, then let's show that.
Well, here, so if we do the math, so they have seven point seven nine two minus five point one two. That's gonna leave you with two point. They'll leave you with the excess that will get you to that number, so I think the math works. Seven point seven two minus five point one two is two point six seven two.
No, but remember, when they come in.
By rounding it up.
That, that shouldn't be rounded up.
Has a circle, you know, and goes to check this flat out. They're, they're gonna be going to the different points here.
Seven two and then it will add up. The survey area.
Yeah, it would have to be, so there you go, so I'll put that in there.
I think once there's, once there's a box on there.
You have, you have carrying.
The hash marks business is, you know.
Come back to water.
It's just a way to try and do it. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's almost like this is the only one that should have hash marks, you know what I mean? But whatever.
If we get what we said, we're gonna get to you, are we, we all set, do you have any further questions?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Have any idea when are your next hearing?
It, it's the twenty-third of October. Okay, Carol, do you have anything?
You are?
Or not?
No, I have nothing else to say.
Cause we're about to change topics.
Well, about to close the hearing.
The hearing is closed.
Oh, you closed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, we'll get through this.
Alright, so we'll get, we'll give them something that they can work off of, alright, I just put something together rough, but yeah.
The bill.
I'll look it over with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Through you, when, when I do the minutes, either tomorrow or Monday, then I'll call them in, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
The Red Sox.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll see.
In that case, uh, no. I'm a Braves, I'm a Braves fan and they're not in it, I found out yesterday, so.
Is the game starting already?
Goodnight, guys. No, eight ten.
Okay.
Eight oh eight, actually.
Okay.
So we need to move along quickly.
So what, what, we do quickly? Um, rules, procedure, it looks like there's nothing in there about minutes, we've kinda discussed whether. We wanna change up.
We do have.
Make it easier to approve minutes since we are a large group. Um, and maybe just make it the majority, a majority vote of a group that's here. But let's take this up another time. We may, we may wanna do some other rules of procedure changes as well.
Are we documenting this process somehow, so at least, we, we've gone through it once, so. As we continue to go through, we can kinda try to solidify the process, but we document and see where we had some shortcomings and maybe make corrections, so.
Are you talking about boundary line adjustments?
Yeah, trying to get that process kind of dialed in and detailed while we go through it.
Usually, it's a lot simpler.
Okay. Well, I, I, I would say that usually the requests are a lot simpler. Okay. And it doesn't involve multiple changes over a short period of time.
We had a, it, with these same properties, we had another boundary line adjustment.
We've had a couple.
Yeah.
Last spring.
Well, we had one back in January, that was the most recent. Oh, yeah, was it one fifteen, twenty-five, it shows up in the ArcGIS system?
Uh, but really, the core issue here is the fact that the, the parcels aren't labeled correctly.
That's what I think, but.
That is, that is the, the issue.
Yeah.
If they, if they were labeled correctly and there was uh something to link them up and show them what's. What's there, the total acreage and everything, it wouldn't be ambiguous as, as it is.
Right, there are references to previous um Mylars or plots. But they're not shown on here and it makes it very difficult to cross-reference when you're looking at this. So all you had to do was put something in parentheses that says previous plot or acreage. And it would have been clear, and I still take objection to the rounding. Well, I mean, it's, you got three significant figures and now you're going down to two there, so you're gonna be off. Right, but you also use the rounding rule that's wrong. Yeah. So I, 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 I'm, as a math, as a math person, I, I get wigged out when it doesn't add up. So, I mean. And then they said it did add up.
Remember, I mean, some of these property line edges can be piles of rocks, you know, here in Vermont, so. It's just how accurate does it need to be?
Um, I, I don't, you know, I really don't care about accuracy, what I care about is consistency. And so that if you're going to put something on the, uh, on the plaque. That you refer to the same math that you've used on the plaque.
Yes.
On the letter.
Yeah.
And if you're not, then you're just creating confusion. And, and for me, if we're making our decisions, it's much easier to make a decision when there's no confusion.
Yeah.
And it's clear and transparent. And I know that we've.
Confusion. There's been confusion on this from the very beginning, that's been a problem, what they've been bringing in wasn't complete, we kept asking for more information and more information and. And I thought.
Even the one earlier this year.
We, we have to put together a checklist. And that says, that says that this, 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 and this all has to be on every plot, that every.
Yeah.
Piece that we get, so we don't, so there isn't any ambiguity on their parts whatsoever and we can point right to it. So we don't, so there isn't any ambiguity on their part whatsoever, and we can point right to it.
Right.
Because we do this every time. I mean, think of the, the one we did up on the other part of McKinley.
Yep.
That we were hashing the stuff over, which on one side of the road.
That was on the east side of McKinley.
And, and that, I mean, well, there's some other things I want to add to that. Like they had one parcel twisted, right? They had north on the same piece of paper. They had one parcel showing us north this way and one parcel showing us north 90 degrees off, which is just makes life even.
And I think it was an insert, a box.
It was a box insert on top.
Made my mind go crazy. Because I'm trying to get an orientation in my head about where the insert box, how it needs to be twisted.
Again, we can talk about this. I, I think there ought to be GPS locations on these things too, and I don't understand why we're not doing.
So this kind of brings up the question about, you know, do we want boundary line adjustment language? Um, yes. In our subdivision bylaw.
Yes. For sure. And there isn't in our current bylaws, and there is a reference in the new proposed.
Does anyone need one that's easier to read this week?
I did print one myself, but.
I'll take one.
What is it?
It's the same thing we started last week, but it's, it's printed full page.
It's on, it's on full page as opposed to the. Anybody else? I got one.
I have mine.
Oh, yeah.
You have one?
I can share it. Well.
I need one.
But I, so Dimitri's point, I think that it should be consistent. And so whatever we're, whatever we do now on this one is something we can use as a template.
Yeah.
For future discussion, because we don't have much in the way of guidance for a boundary line adjustment. It's not even considered a minor subdivision, right? So, I mean, if we're going to take all of the time to look at what the differences between a major subdivision and a minor subdivision, we can take the things that if it's, if it's a subset within the minor subdivision, we should at least have those things that need to be.
Yeah.
Clearly identified.
And no, you know, they're getting a little irritated, I'll say.
Probably by me, but.
But, and again, I mean, that's an op, that's an op, it's an opportunity for us to eliminate that by providing to them what clear expectations we have.
Right.
If it's predictable, it's gonna make them happier because they can then know what we are expecting. So.
And I have this image in my head that whenever we're talking about numbers, and you, you corrected me on one of them before, I said, I think we've already dealt with this. And I made a motion, and the motion was contingent upon it being executed by X, Y, and Z. Well, we didn't get X, Y, and Z. I think we got X, but we didn't get Y and Z. And that just frustrates the bejesus out of me. Because I was trying to help us move the process along. But when it doesn't get executed that way, then we get a mess. And Bill had an issue, the clerks had an issue. It didn't get filed in time. That was may have been our fault or collectively the town's fault. And so that's why I was so adamant that I wasn't gonna make a motion about a contingent.
Yeah.
Acceptance because.
And I, and I think that's fair. I think the other end, and I see this a lot in engineering. When contractors provide you a submission and you reject it, you provide the reasons as to why you're rejecting it. And you make it abundantly clear that these are the reasons. So then go back and they correct him. You don't come back after and say, oh, by the way, there was this error that we didn't find the first time around.
Right.
You didn't, now you need to correct. It's like, well, that wasn't part of your original review.
Right.
So let's just make this your original review and here's the correction you're supposed to make. Give it back to them. They can make the corrections and then we're all happy.
Right.
So.
Well, that's why we have to provide them with a clear set of directions. Because then if we don't, if we don't catch it the second time and I have to come back again, it's still on them. If it's been clearly specified as necessary and not there. Right now, it's the other way. I mean, I, I just, I, the Hubbard subdivision is the other one that I think we should use as an example. How many times did we have to have those guys back in? At least three that I remember.
Well, the sketch started out really sketchy.
Yes.
But yes, good, good points. And, um, yeah, let's, let's consider adding this to the bylaw. And looking for language for that.
And not for nothing, I can see the gentleman's frustration because you have to get a surveyor to come in here and do it. That stuff's not cheap. You get a surveyor to come out here and take the survey of your land and everything, and he's got his license here. That's where he's telling us. He can't convey that the other way because if he does, he loses his license. And I mean, to get a survey license these days, you have to go to school for four years to be a surveyor.
Right.
So it's not something somebody wants to go back and do, so.
No, but between, between having to do that or doing it, even though our expectation is, is not reasonable compared to, in comparison with what they should be doing and are trained to do. We can have a consistent alignment between how it's represented on the survey with like a dialogue box.
In the letter.
And then in the letter, and that the two match.
Here's a suggestion that maybe we can take. I mean, I don't know, Corcelli. I mean, is there an opportunity to bring a surveyor in here and let us, let them tell us? Yeah, no, I'm saying maybe him or another surveyor. How would this be clear? How would a surveyor make this? Right? We're trying to guess at what makes it clear. Let's have the surveyor tell us how this would be done.
Yeah, or as we do the boundary line adjustment requirements.
Yes.
Have the survey, surveyor say, yep, this is good, this is good.
Right there, he said, you can't do the lot as combined because it's not conveying.
Yeah, it's not conveyed yet.
So he's like, that, that's great. You know, I'm not gonna doubt the surveyor who's been doing this for 50 years that he's wrong. So it's like, let's use his knowledge. How, how can you make this clearer for us while still staying within your purview of being a surveyor? Like, can you do?
Your professional responsibility.
How can we make this clear? And if there's not, then maybe that's how it is. I don't know. We could do boundary lines or, you know, widen the boundary line. But again, I think we're at the, just the proposal phase. Once they get it approved, then he'll have the final plot, which will show the new boundary lines.
Okay.
They didn't waste much time getting it on the market, this last law, which shouldn't, doesn't, it doesn't exist yet.
Yeah.
A week after our last hearing.
Not, not.
They can, they can have that on the market.
You can advertise it.
Have it on the market and just say contingent upon approval of the town, that's all, and have a, they could have a contract on it.
I was looking at the house here three years ago when we moved here and they're like, uh, we're selling it, but it's contingent upon us finding other housing elsewhere. And it's like, gee, that's gonna take you a while. If I'm having much trouble finding this housing, you think you're gonna find housing and I gotta wait until you find housing so I can move in? Yeah, it's like, yeah, no.
Well, yeah, that can get complicated.
Yeah.
But they need us to approve this and us to file this before it can be conveyed.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And so the buyer needs to know that. The seller needs to know that.
Right.
The, the real estate agent knows that.
Yeah. I think it's just a matter of showing people, prospective buyers ahead of time, so that way you're not waiting for all this stuff to get done. And then be in the middle of winter and say, hey, look at this nice white snowy field that we have for sale. You know?
Okay.
All right.
Let's, yeah. Should we move on?
Right, sure.
Um, so I thought tonight we'd look at the concept, the concepts. Go to where we left off, and there's three things looming right here. There's the Certificate of Subdivision Compliance that requires the civil, a civil engineer.
Hang on, can you give us your page reference or something? I, I have no idea where this is.
Left off, five of 11.
Okay. Well, where you left, where we left off and where I left off and where I finished are all different places.
Six of 11.
Five.
It's, um, it is see, 6A, under numbered. 6A in section 104.
Six.
6A, well, actually it starts at B, A is Logan's comment.
I have discuss on October 2nd, starting with number six, Certificate of Subdivision Compliance.
So a certificate, yeah, that certificate from a civil engineer of record stating that they've inspected and completed projects and required infrastructure improvements were constructed in compliance with the conditions requirements of subdivision approval. As-built plans drawn to scale indicating any monuments, utilities, structures, roadways, easements, and other improvements. Site visit and then issuing certificates, and that would fall to Bill, it looks like. So do we want?
Do we define a civil engineer of record? Is that a licensed engineer? Is a degreed engineer? I don't know. When I just graduate college and be an engineer, come out here and say, I'm the engineer of record and this is good? I don't know.
Well, we definitely would like licensed.
Somewhere in here, there's, there's a qualification.
Is there?
Not by def, not a definition, but if engineers reference with qualifications.
Okay.
Good memory, Sherman.
I don't know where it is.
Okay, so can we take this one step at a time? Uh, Logan has a comment under 6A. That's, and let's start there. So consider whether you want a Certificate of Subdivision Compliance. Not all towns have them, however, most subdivision regulations in the region I've seen require such a certificate of improvement. So my comment to that was, why not? It provides clarity.
Uh, requiring a certificate? Provides clarity? I'm not sure.
Uh, can, whether you want a Certificate of Subdivision Compliance, so that it's clear that they're in compliance with the subdivision requirements. That, that provides clarity.
But isn't it the same thing as approving the subdivision? Application?
Maybe. I'm just reading what he put there. And my comment was, sure, why not? I mean, unless it means extra work for us.
What he put essentially is some towns do it and some towns don't.
Yeah.
And I, I asked him like, well, what were the, what are the difference between the two types of towns? And where would Rutland Town fall in those differences? And he wasn't able to answer that right off the top of his head. So I think it boils down to whether we need that much oversight and whether we want to spend our resources doing that oversight. Because, you know, maybe we need to look at the performance bond and the maintenance bond with this. Because together, that's a lot of work. And maybe some of these are more important than another.
Well, I, I just had a question. The phase development, development. I, do, do we have any, is that something that we've? Since, since I've been here, I have not seen any applications of phase development.
Andy or Howard, has that ever come into play?
No, I don't think so.
Well, even colonial estates or colonial.
Oh, that was long before me.
Because this, this, some of this falls under that.
Yeah.
Usually the subdivision, even if they're doing it in phases, they come in and subdivide the whole piece of property. But the other thing is, how, how big a parcel can we look at? The biggest, Act 250 takes over on most subdivisions that of any size.
10 homes.
And so, I mean, so how big, so who's gonna do a phased development on less than 10 acres? You know? It's really not. I wouldn't think that happened.
10 acres and how many homes?
I thought it was, I thought it was 10 parcels.
10 parcels within 10 acres, so that's a one acre parcel, right?
I thought it was.
So that's 10, 10 homes or 10, I mean, 10 structures that could be multifamily dwellings? Yep.
Well, don't we have that new law now that comes in that says you can't have a certain a minimum lot size anymore? It's really with the really small lots, if you have sewer, right? Bill, you from?
Wait, if you have sewer, you can have a smaller lot?
Yeah.
That makes sense because you don't need a septic, you don't need to have your leach field or anything like that, so.
You gotta control how much usage of the sewer there is.
Well, that's taken care of by the town, right? Don't you pay a sewer bill?
No, I didn't mean that.
Oh, oh.
You have.
Oh. Yeah.
In one small space.
Same thing is true for a, uh, well, at least in terms of an occupancy for a, for a septic system. Terms of number of people that should be. Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, let's look at the bonding ones.
Uh, hang, hang on a second. Have we moved on from 6A and B?
No, I just thought maybe we consider them all, all three of those together.
I had a quick question. When we say subdivision with improvements.
Yeah.
I know Mary Beth, you've mentioned before that, you know, sometimes you guys move wetlands. So would that be considered an improvement? I'm just curious, what, what defines improvements to the land? Is that defined?
It's in A or B, one of them.
Where is?
Uh, for, right at six, Certificate of Subdivision, for any subdivision with improvements, a Certificate of Subdivision Compliance shall be conditioned of a subdivision approval.
All right, and it's.
It's gonna be roads and utilities.
Most likely.
Really, are you adding a bunch of roads? Are you adding water sewer lines and that?
So those are the kind of things that we're saying for improvements.
It was a lot, Dimitri, as opposed to like any structure with an app.
What if I wanted to put in a bio retention pond?
No, it's like, it's like.
Help collect water.
Creating a development, that's what it is.
Yeah, all right. So that's what we mean by improvements? All right.
It's not, it's not like taking, taking dirt and building a house. That's not that, it's, it's, it's in town. Like it's a new infrastructure you want to turn over in town, things like that, like that's, yeah, that's, that's not.
So that's where with that stuff, then yes, I think having a licensed engineer or somebody that's willing to put their.
We don't, we don't review that. So those infrastructure plans, water, wastewater permits, all go through the state automatically. So we're not gonna review those plans for water supply and wastewater supply.
But I think it's a good point that maybe we should add that in the definitions, just so that we know what, what falls within improvements or not.
Statute, see if they've already have it defined.
Well, right now, what we're looking at is, is relative to a Certificate of Subdivision Compliance also. And question is, do we need that?
Right.
I think, yeah.
You think yes?
Pardon?
You think?
That's a question. I think that's.
Well, we can go back. I just thought that if we wanted to have all three of these, you know, just what kind of a burden that might put.
When you say what's three of these, what is your?
Well, the, the maintenance, see, the number seven is really two things. It's a performance bond and it's a maintenance bond. And, and.
Okay, but I thought we were still on six.
Logan and I noticed that and he said, yeah, I really should have separated those out.
I think you all have one.
You don't have seven with, okay.
I don't think you have seven without the, uh, phase development. That's my understanding of it.
Okay. Um, so where, where are we discussing phase development? Which section is that in?
That was, that was before that.
Phase development is C on six of 11. I just found it.
Yes.
That's under two. Two C.
Yep.
Phase development applications. An applicant who has divided a subdivision or development project over phases that will be contingently completed over time may choose to seek a permit for that phase only. However, they must provide a master plan of the entire project that demonstrates the sufficiency of infrastructure for the entire project if and when it is completed. Okay, I, I, when I read that last time, I did not make a, an intuitive connection to six. Because six doesn't necessarily, it's, I, I saw phase development as a subsection of what we're doing. And i- if it applies, great that it applies to the subdivision regulations. If it's not, if there's no phase development, it's irrelevant and we don't have to spend any time on it. Or am I just?
Probably.
Am I?
What I thought, and I haven't had, I haven't had the experience. But I thought if you're looking at phase development, they're gonna be, you may make a decision in phase two of something that's supposed to happen in phase, phase three.
Right.
That that is detrimental somehow to the to the, to the, it may have been a bad decision because you assumed that, I don't know. Maybe phase three was to improve, improve the sewage capacity. And you didn't, that was included and it didn't happen and therefore you, you shortened phase one, I.
Yeah. Keep in mind, um, as we go through this, we're creating questions for Logan to get back to us on.
Okay, I have a question for Logan then, on, on C phase development applications. My question is, this what's the origin of this language? What's the origin of this language? And how close does it get to zoning provisions that we may not even want to have in there, since we don't have zoning? That's the question that I wrote to myself last night.
Yeah, it sounds like there's has there's some zoning things involved in that.
That's specifically to to C.
Hmm.
So two starts on page uh five of eleven and C picks that up. So it it, what I wanna know is, do we need it, given what we're trying to do with our subdivision regulations? Or can we just omit it? Because I don't know that we've had a phase development um application. Since I s- I first sat on this.
Well, suppose we have a ten acre subdivision come to us.
Right.
And the developer only wants to do the road halfway in. He can totally sell some more lots.
Yep.
So he's got ten lots, just, and so he's gonna put in a road that that reaches the first four lots.
Okay.
And then as soon as he sells those, he's gonna continue the the road to town specifications to for the rest of the lot. So therefore, that would be the, that and what we and that, the subdivision compliance regular thing, I don't, I don't see that that. That that really has any relationship to the two, but.
That's what happened with Grover Drive.
Pardon?
That's what happened with Grover Drive, is they built the road and it stopped.
Yes.
They sold the ones in the back and they finished the road.
Hmm.
Well, to us, to a, to be a circle.
Yeah, so.
What was compliance, would have been nice to have in that case?
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't see reason or reason not to have it. For one thing, it makes, it it puts the onus on the developer. To make it, they're stating that that they've complied with everything. It's not up to us to be looking at. That them and and have us miss something.
Right.
So.
And if it's not gonna be done, if the development is not gonna happen all at once, then they should just state that. Our plan is to develop this first, raise some capital. And then continue the development and continue the road, which makes sense. So you'd be advocating for leaving the language on phase development.
Yes, absolutely.
That that's fine. But I still think we should ask, I mean, I think we should ask Logan for his perspective.
Sure.
But.
Yeah, if we're doing phase development. I guess, not to jump too far ahead, but that that would fall right on, I mean, if we're doing phase development, it's that big, I'm assuming a performance bond would be expected. You know, at that point, you're probably trying to do some sort of. Couple of homes you're trying to build, I mean, we wanna make sure the contractor is gonna finish and has the.
Right.
Bonding capacity to do so.
Absolutely.
So.
Which brings us to seven, is that what you're saying, Dimitri?
Uh. Yeah, I'm just trying to see also with any subdivision with improvements, how does the phase? Right, so if we got it phased and they break out two lots and they've got the rest of the, you know, say fifty acres or something, ten acres. So they break out two acres here and they phase, and then how does that tie in with certificate of subdivision? We're making the improvements to those two lots, do the, at the end of that phase, do they have to then provide a certificate of compliance before they can move on to the next phase?
No, I would think that you, the subdivision is gonna be done on paper. And the lots are gonna be created instantly.
That's our task.
And then, and then the, but then the developer may wanna put the infrastructure in. The road, as we're talking about, water line, sewer line, put that in incrementally. But so now if he's going, if you're going down the road, the certificate is gonna say that he has to put in a sewer line big enough. Not just for the first four houses, but he's gotta put in a sewer line adequate for all ten.
So at what point do we check that and verify that the sewer line is correct at their phase one?
Yeah, uh exactly.
No, it's that.
Right in the beginning and that's why.
And verify they put in that.
Certificate of compliance gets.
Yeah.
Gets put in at the initial subdivision.
All right, and we'll put in those milestones after, yeah. I'm just curious then again, if they change that and they say, ah, we're gonna do a lot at a time and now they go, ah, we're gonna do two. You know, again, that changes their phasing, how's that gonna impact and change the subdivision for improvements and their certificate of compliance? So I'm just trying to think how that all ties together.
Right, I I I wasn't questioning whether we should have a certificate of compliance. In fact, mine was a check mark and I said. I think, why not? It seems to provide clarity.
Yeah, I was, I, I didn't. Didn't roll with me in the beginning, but.
I, yeah, I'd just like to know where, like, at each subdivision phase, you know, as they, as they're progressing, then we go out and have they wishes. Subcon, you know, the the compliance certificate with the improvements then, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what phase.
Along with this, the phasing, you have a certificate of compliance that corresponds with each phase.
Those phase, yeah.
Each phase that you complete it, you have a certificate of compliance for that, that component of the development, or that aspect of it.
A way to include that in here, so it's obvious to people that are doing that, that that's the intent, so as they're planning it. That they need to then bring, so you're planning this division, you're at phase one, but you need to show us the other phases that you also intend.
They do that with their, with their uh perm or their request for subdivision permit. They tell us how big it's gonna be. You can't just keep adding to it. That's, that that would be another subdivision. And then another subdivision.
Which is, which is what we've experienced a couple of times here.
So they have to tell us the scope of it at the beginning, and then they can do the phases. So the question is, how often do we wanna check, you know, as, as the phases go in? Is how I see it.
I mean, I don't know that the planning commission would have to get involved. As long as the developer is submitting reports. Phase reports to Bill or somebody saying, this is, this is our compliance checklist for phase one.
Do we have that now?
No.
I don't think so.
It it says one of, one of the, one of the things in phase development is that uh. Is to provide a master, we ensure a master plan for the entire project that demonstrates the sufficiency of infrastructure.
Right.
For the entire project once it's completed, so. That's a.
Yeah, that, that would, that would almost create the checklist, because it's gonna vary from developer to developer or project to project.
Yeah.
Phase development projects may alternatively choose to include all phases at once in the application. Isn't that what we just said, though, that they're supposed to do? And then the last sentence says they may alternatively.
Hmm.
How's that different than us asking to give us all the phases and the big picture upfront?
I I guess the only thing is, is that it provides a little bit of uh flexibility if they don't have a bigger picture in mind. They only have, you know, a limited development originally, and then as, as things move forward. They decide to add, then I think they'd come back and just update their, their phase compliance documents or whatever, I don't.
Or their permit.
Or their what?
Their permit.
Or their permit. Do we permit? We don't permit, we just subdivide.
Well, well, it's just a permit, isn't it? No, for, will we approve a subdivision? It's.
Uh, we we approved the application. There's no real permit, permit number.
We, we don't call it a permit, but, but we.
It's the closest thing to one, you know?
But a permit would be under zoning, right?
It's. Is it how you work?
We say approval from the board prior to, you know, instead of a permit. Right, for the phase development, it says we'll seek a permit for that phase, but we're not doing permits, so we doing a.
We don't, we've never done anything like that, so.
Right, yeah. It's not in our current bylaws and we haven't dealt with.
We're gonna, there there's gonna be a whole host of things that are gonna be, have to be created out of this, so.
So Dimitri, where, what is your reference?
I just see on the phase development, third, third sentence, choose to seek a permit, so you.
Choose to seek a permit, okay, so choose to.
Apply for.
Choose to apply?
Well, I would say just meets the board's approval, right? I mean, are we gonna force them to do a permit? Cause then we get a permit, now we're going into zoning and, you know.
So to choose to, choose to seek approval.
Yeah.
From the PC?
Yes, I'd say, I, I.
Yes.
I know why the select board is written in some of this stuff.
Approve, approval from the PC for that phase only.
Yeah. We're not issuing permits and if we don't plan to, cause we don't wanna do zoning, then.
Right. But the approval is what we're doing in terms of.
What we need, yes.
Yeah.
What do you think about the performance bonding?
If there's infrastructure, you need it.
Yeah.
For sewer water.
Yeah.
Even road, to make sure the road.
Yep.
Turns out to be, has the right thickness of asphalt.
We certainly want that to go through us as opposed to select board.
Right. I mean, what I, what I highlighted was the, basically the third line or second line and second to fourth line. Subdivider, uh post a performance bond or proper full surety to cover the cost and ensure completion of the specified improvement.
What cost? Cost of the road or the cost of the improvements?
Well, it says specified improvement, so what are the specified improvements? As Bill was saying, that could be road, water, sewer, whatever it happens to be.
House, though?
We would be specifying, like, they, they, we're not gonna define them because they're gonna be specified.
Yes. By the developer.
Hmm.
By the process.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would, it would vary depending on the project and whether they have access to, I don't know, city. Water and sewer or something else.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're just talking about sufficient uh septic capacity for X number of units, I guess.
So for this bond, we're talking about three years, sounds about right.
There's an option to, somewhere it talks about an option to extend it if, didn't use that that word.
So. So, yeah, so I have a question about that, Barbara, that's line one, two, three, four, five. It says such uh bond or surety must be approved by the select board, isn't that us or no?
It should be us.
It should be us, it should be PC. Okay, that's what I thought, but.
Especially since it's prior to final plat approval.
Right, so the select board wouldn't be doing that.
Right, I I don't think any of the references to the select board here should stay, yeah.
How much of a bond do they need to post?
Depends on what's.
Depends on what you're doing.
No, no, so it depends on the cost, right? So I mean, it's in construction, the contractor has to get a bond to ensure they can complete the contract and they're bonded up to that amount. And we know that, cause they bid on it and that's what they're awarded. Here, we're relying upon the developer to tell us the cost and they may underestimate the cost to get a reduced bond. So I'm just trying to think, how do we ensure that the cost and the bond they're getting is gonna be sufficient for the work they're planning on doing?
To cover the cost and ensure completion. That's what it's supposed to add up to.
I know, but if they're telling us, oh, it's how much it's gonna cost you.
We get the.
How do we get?
Good number.
Exactly, to where we have a realistic bond, that if they did default, we could go after and have the project completed.
How do we get to the, a good number?
A realistic number, yeah.
Yeah.
Have we had a lot of new construction here that we could build or base the price off of, like? You know, like, what's the average cost square footage of building a house in Vermont? We can use that number and say, all right, depending on these amount of houses you're building, here's the average square footage, here's how much it should cost you. Here's the, you know, bond that you need to get, exactly.
Recently, those numbers are only good for a couple of weeks now.
Well, I know, that, that's the reason why I bring it up, cause you got, you got wood, you got building materials, all those costs are going up.
This, this is, this is.
Only for the roads and the.
Construction of roads or other improvements, we are, we don't get into.
Right.
Buildings, this is, that's not, that's beyond our scope, this is, this is. For subdivision requires the construction of roads or other public improvements, it's public infrastructure, so the roads and whatever is underneath it.
But Dimitri's, Dimitri's question is still valid, how do we get a number?
Right, but it, but there's gonna be. When we built the public safety building, we had the construction costs and estimates for all of the utilities and infrastructure. Like, it wasn't like an unknown before we went into it, so.
Who provided that?
The engineer.
Okay.
And the architect. So there, I I would, it would be unusual that they would, you know, be like, oh, well, I wanna do this. But I have no idea what I'm doing yet, so I just wanna get approval before I go do something like that's, they're gonna have a plan.
It should, but, you know, I mean, that's your engineer that's helping you guys out, giving you prices, so the contractor, you know, you're not getting hosed by a contractor. On this end, you could have a developer in here that has an engineer and says, yeah, it's, it's gonna cost this much, and then underestimate it so they get a reduced bond. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're protected.
Yep, so, so, yeah, we'll pose that question to Logan, have him do some research on that.
I mean, even then, we could look at Vtrans and what they require out of their contractors for a bond too. I think it's a minimum of like, you know. I mean, I get a couple million, depending on the price of our project, but, you know.
So the um, there is both on line, under number seven, performance bonding, lines one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight, uh there's reference to the select board, as well as the developmental board.
Yep, yep.
It's, that's us.
Right, so instead of having select board, developmental review board and subdivider, it would be PC and subdivider? And we are the subdivider, but all of that just goes to PC.
Well, the subdivider is the person doing the application here.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, all right. So then it's the. The uh select board and developmental review board becomes PC.
So what about this maintenance bond for two years? After completion of specified improvements.
That'd typically be for a road, to make sure that the road doesn't deteriorate.
Do we need a bond?
Well, if the developer doesn't compact the road properly and all of a sudden it's, it has.
Well, do we have a detail on how we build our roads and how we construct them? Okay, so they'd have to follow the sub base and know all the asphalt layers and everything, all right?
To be trans standards.
All right.
Who's gonna keep track of all this stuff?
Hmm.
Who's gonna keep track of all these bonds and compliance?
Well.
Easy.
Typically, you have somebody in the town that does it. I've had to post a bond just to dig across a dirt road. You know, in, in certain towns, I don't mean, what can you do wrong? It's a dirt road, but they come back and then the, like, the road commissioner.
Yeah.
Would, in that case, came and inspected how we backfilled the ditch across the road and we got the bond back.
What's the consensus on future development here? Are we looking at more single family homes? Do you think there's gonna be a lot of multi families and big developments taking place in the Rutland area?
That's a good point, and and it kinda um. Kinda looks forward to our town plan and whether we want to make any changes and encourage more housing development. Or keep the open spaces as much as possible. So, yeah, I mean, what we put in place here will be in place when we do the town plan. So maybe we look, look forward a little bit.
The plan and what we want to make sure that what we're putting in place, so if we want development, we're not making it. Difficult for somebody that wants to come in here by them having to post a ba- a significant bond, so just what's our end game? So that way we can figure out how best to get this.
So, you know, at some point, we might be given, probably will be given housing targets.
Right.
I mean, wasn't Rutland City already saying five hundred units they're gonna try to have? Like, I mean, that's.
Every municipality would be given a target.
I don't think that's a bad thing. I mean, it also helps us uh uh address the issue with uh reserving. Uh, single family homes in particular for um Airbnb usage when they're not available for housing. I mean, that's, that's, that's a big issue that we have identified statewide.
Right.
And we have had firsthand experience with that in uh before this commission, so. If housing is really a problem in in development and bringing people into the area for affordable housing, then that issue has to be addressed.
Right, you know, in the bigger picture is, is we've got, we've got land. We're, so, you know, we're, we encircle the city, you know, people, and we have a great school. People will want to develop.
We wanna have it controlled, though, we don't wanna.
Right, but does this control it too much?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm real comfortable with having this bond in there.
Both of them?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if our goal is that we're gonna get more single family homes, is that gonna then be cumbersome to a, you know, if I were to come out here and say, I wanna build my house. And I got enough money to get some land and do this, and now I gotta put in, you know, can it be, yeah.
If you don't have the bond, the, the temptation of the developers to cut.
For the developer, if you have a developer, but if it's like a personal homeowner.
Personal home, the same way.
That's not, that's not, that's not subdivision.
That's, yeah, sorry.
That's just building.
Yeah, 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 just, yeah. Yeah, no, if you're gonna come in, yeah.
Okay, so we generally like these, any, any questions to direct Logan's way? About, about the bonds or?
He, he recommends an, an A, which is in red, he says most subdivisions, regulations in the region I've seen have. So.
Take that with a grain of salt, he's, hasn't worked with that many, yes, but.
Okay, all right.
And it does say may also require a maintenance bond, so. And it does say may also require a maintenance bond. So you know, that part is strictly an option.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, on, on number nine, right of appeal, uh, board of adjustment. We don't have a board of adjustment. That should be us. Well, who's the secretary? I mean, um, may appeal any order requirement, decision determination made by the administrative officer or planning commission by filing within 15 days of said act.
We'll have to go through here and find all those references. Yes.
Administrative officer and the secretary of the board of adjustment.
Yeah, and, and take into consideration that will be us, any, any reference to a board of adjustment. And any reference to administrative officer will be Bill.
Right. There's a circular reference because if they want to make an appeal to a decision we've made, it's going to come right back to us. That's, that's circular. There's a problem there. Either it needs to be
Not for us. There's not. We already made a decision one. That's an easy one.
Well, that's how it works now, right? If people well, it, well, we don't have it written in our subdivision ordinance right now that they can appeal.
Decision has yet to be challenged recently.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a conundrum that I flagged and I thought that we should at least need to address this or talk to Logan about it. I'm not exactly sure what the question is.
From the statute. That is, that is pulled.
Most of this is.
Word for word from the statute. So.
So who, who do they appeal to if it's not us? Or is it us? There is no board of adjustment. That has to be directed.
What do we do for the stormwater?
Select board?
Ordinance. I think it was the select board.
Oh, is it the select board?
The stormwater ordinance? I don't know. It was a while ago, but
I don't know.
Cause I remember talking about the appeals there, but I don't remember who did the
Above, above us, it goes to the state level. Like there's, that's the environmental division. Like there's jurisdiction above, above the town.
Is that how the stormwater ordinance works too?
Yeah.
Um, so, but we can double check that.
So who gets the appeal after, after PC?
We're thinking the environmental commission or something.
Okay, state environmental.
It's a question.
Yep, for Logan.
Maybe so. It's also carry the same restrictions as the person wanting to appeal must have participated in the process to be able to appeal. So like if you made, if we made a decision tonight on this, no one would be able to appeal it.
Except them.
Except that, right. But if you approved it and the neighbor said, hey, I, I want to challenge that, they, they can't.
Because they have no standing.
They couldn't, they didn't participate in the process.
Right, alright.
Right. That's right.
That's a good point.
Wow. Yeah. Section 105 really seems like it's hurting it.
Well, those are our final plats. We're not there yet. We're still in the interim stuff.
Let's take a breath before we dive into that one.
Well, let's, let's finish up 10, which is the enforcement. I don't think there's any objection there, but I thought we should at least bring that uh, section to a conclusion. The administrative officer shall institute in the name of the town, any appropriate action, injunction or other proceeding to prevent restrain, correct or abate a violation of the Rutland Town subdivision regulations. Violation of these subdivision regulations may be enforced by as provided in BS, in 24 VSA 4451 or as provided in 24 VSA 1974. Yep. You okay with that, Bill? You're going to be the, um, the henchman?
I'm the bad guy for a lot of stuff right now. Don't worry. It's fine.
Okay. So we can put a check mark for that. Alright, there we go.
And I think everywhere in here, we want to be calling this the Rutland Town subdivision by law. So that it goes right back to statute there as well. And what, and what the select board approved. They approved the subdivision by law, just so we all have the the same language, all using the same language.
They didn't approve anything because we haven't given them one yet.
Well, they made a motion to what they wanted.
I, I'm somewhat playing on words, Barbara. You were talking about the, um, title for the document that they wanted us to work on, not the actual approval of the um, provisions. Cause they haven't approved anything.
Right. Right, right. Just talking the title. Yep.
Yep, title, right. I was, I should have kept my motion.
Okay, let's, let's put this to rest. Until we do the levens. Found the line adjustment again.
Start section 105 on the 23rd, right?
Like Groundhog Day.
Okay. Well, the good news is that we're over halfway.
All right. As Dana pointed out, we don't have Mike Rowe here today. I I want to talk to the select board about what his schedule is looking like and they meet Tuesday evening. And the town plan, we kind of left that on the stuff and announcements here. We left that, that we would think about whether we wanted to go for a grant, a state grant. Even though we're still like two years out, but I thought the consensus pretty much was we probably just wanted to do an update.
An update to the plan.
Uh, uh, an update was just like changing data, changing maps.
Rather than a major revision or
Right.
Um, except anything that we put in the subdivision bylaws needs to be consistent within the town.
Right. Doesn't show up too often in the town plan, but that, that is correct.
I'm just thinking forward because of the work that Norman and, and Bill and I did with respect to things that are mentioned in the town plan. If you're, uh, in reference to, um, subdivision by, uh, bylaws.
There'll be some crosswalking.
But that, that, I just didn't want us to forget that. That's all.
So are we still the same mindset? We're updating. We can bring this, bring this up at any point. I mean,
So the
We don't go for a grant this fall, we can probably still go next, next fall and, and have enough time.
What's the deadline for the, um, uh, applications for this fall?
November, I believe.
Hmm. I think that's why we put it on last, uh, that's why we included in the minutes for our last meeting because we needed to make a decision now if we really had any realistic expectation of doing any work on this prior to 2027. And if we're going to start the work in 2027, applying next year at, in October for a November grant, that wouldn't start until sometime.
Oh, I, um, the other option is to do, to update it and use regional planning staff to help do that. Yeah. I mean, either way, you're most likely using regional planning commission staff.
So the question on the table is, do we want to apply for a grant?
Or do we want to attempt to apply for a grant?
What grant?
It's municipal planning grant.
So that when we open the town plan, so that we can get the money to do the pre-work for revising the town plan to be ready for 2027.
No, I, the reason why I ask, because I know V-Trans puts out a lot of grants. So there's a grant that, um, Amy Tackco just sent out, which was like 6 million funding for pedestrian infrastructure and bicycle. So didn't know if you guys were already aware of or privy to those grants. I mean, it's public knowledge. It's like I'm sharing anything, you know, it's trade secrets, but
I, I think probably our road commissioner stays up to date on, on those.
Okay. But if, if you want, I can start, you know, just canvassing those and saving them and bringing them in, just grant applications, you know.
Okay.
It was free money for a little bit of writing, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, what are we looking at in terms of a, um, a, a total allocation? Barbara, I can't remember from the last time.
They're usually about seven or $8,000. Not a whole lot, so.
Are they 50? Is that 50% of our cost or?
Uh, 10, 10% match.
With a 10% match.
10% match. It's competitive. What they usually do, it's ACCD, uh, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. Um, spreads them around the state. So each regional commission gets, you know, three or four of them approved. And then any given year.
My, my personal, uh, perspective would be that if we're moving to get this, uh, uh, subdivision by law done for some time in 2026, then it would be an opportune time to cross-reference uh, this document with whatever appears in the town plan so that we can be statutorily in compliance with, um, with regulations around.
I think the select board is looking for something sooner than, than sometime in 2026, since we have
It's not likely to happen at the end, by the end of 2025. That's all I'm pointing out.
Right, but I think maybe we should think more about getting it done sooner in 2026 instead of having an open-ended.
Sure. My, my point is that it will be done before we have to complete the work on the, um, um, town plan.
Right.
And so we would have this done. It seems, it seems to be an extra logical step to apply the grant to the work here. Open it up, look at it and see if we can do some of the crosswalk. So why not take advantage of that, which can then happen sometime in 2026 so that we're ready to do an adoption in 2027? That's all I mean. Okay. It doesn't have to be. I'm just thinking that it's kind of logical.
Oh.
Um, I did want to say just one thing. I apologize for going back to the enforcement. Um, so they, they say that 24 VSA 4451 or provide in 24 VSA 1974A. So I looked up that and it says that uh, you know, one of the parts in there, which I think they're trying to apply is civil enforcement and municipal zoning violations may be brought as a civil ordinance violation pursuant to this section. So again, we're getting into the zoning stuff by referencing this. And the other thing too, that we need to figure out is, if it's an eight, what's the penalty? Because depending upon the penalty, if it's $800 or less, it goes to one court. If it's $800 or more, it goes to another court.
So you're, you're back to the bylaw.
When the enforcement, sorry. I just, I saw that and I looked up the laws. I had this come up earlier with
Make a note of that.
Alright.
But I mean, that was the question that I asked Bill. So.
We have, but we have laws in the, in V-Trans for oversized loads. And it's like, well, a triaxial is only 6,000 pounds. That's great. But how do you enforce that on a construction site where you don't have scales? Right? So it's a good law and it has the right intent, but how's it enforceable? So that's why I was just looking at that. And like, if we were to enforce it, how are we enforcing it? And
It, the enforcement provision comes mostly from zone.
Municipal zoning, which we don't have.
Okay. So, so what are we doing about the town plan? And the municipal planning grant? Because the clock is, I'm not sure we can even get into the queue.
When, when does the town plan need to be completed by?
Oh, I forget. I think it's the latter part of 27. I think it's November, even December.
I'm in 27.
Late 2027.
My recollection was the last time we adopted the plan or we revised the plan. It was, it went before the select board. We have to have a hearing as well, or two hearings. I can't remember. And by the time all was said and done, it was, I think, November. You might've been right. It might've been December when the board, select board adopted it.
And, and when's, when's the next opportunity to revise the plan?
Meaning?
After, after 27.
Um, we, we need to do it by that date or it's not in compliance. And once we have done it, it's eight years.
Okay.
Eight years.
Unless we want to make an amend, you know, amend it somehow.
Alright.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking with Killington and all that stuff, I'm sure it's probably going to be a lot of, uh, people who would still like to be close, but maybe not necessarily in Killington. It may look at Rutland Town as an opportunity to so we may get a lot of you know, turn, not want to say turnover, but a lot of excess from what the village they have million dollar homes up there. Somebody might want to come down here and say, I could pay and get a $400,000 home. And be 15 minutes from the mountain instead of being right on the mountain.
Oh, one thing to think of. So there's a new regional plan. Do we need to make up that happened just recently?
That's
Is that part of the process? Like we'll need, need to make sure that we're consistent with that. I don't know what level of effort that would be.
Um, I don't think there's a whole lot of crosswalk between those. There is some like, um, probably in the energy section. Uh, and that's not going to be done until next June.
July 6th.
Yeah. It's going through the new LRB process, Land Use Regulatory Board. It's their first time with any kind of, uh, regional, or any plans. I mean, they haven't that was yet that adheres to. So we'll need to decide tonight whether we want to go for a municipal planning grant this year. Or we won't get into the queue.
Okay. So Barbara, let me ask this, um, a practical question. Um, it's in November. Do you know the date? Are we talking about the first week of November, the fifth week?
Does someone have a can you look up the Rutland Town?
Yep.
Site? And then the town plan's on there, right?
What do you want to know?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the planning grant.
Well, let, let's get the, the date that was adopted.
October 2019.
Okay. October 19th?
October 29th.
October 29th.
And the date in October? Anyway, okay. Never mind.
15th.
Thank you, Bill.
What does that have to do with the date of the, uh, planning grant?
Eight years?
Mm-hmm. Just back timing.
So we're talking about two years from now, basically. So my question still, I mean, when is the, um, when does the planning grant, um, application have to be submitted?
I think it's early November and then they make a decision in December.
So early November means that it will be before our PC meeting on 13th?
November 3rd.
I don't
It's due, the planning grant.
Application deadline.
Are you saying we can wait until the next meeting? I don't think we'll get in the queue.
No, no, I, I'm just, I, I'm trying to figure out the deadline by which we have to submit a planning grant application.
November 3rd.
That's what we're talking about.
And the third, the third, that's all I wanted to know, the third. I'm not saying we should wait until the next meeting. Because at the next meeting, which is the 23rd, we have to be, we have to have an outline of our grant, if nothing else. And then you might need a subcommittee that works the week of the, uh, uh, the week of the 27th in order to be get, able to get that submitted to the planning commission or whoever the, the regional planning commission for that to be on time for the 3rd. I'm just doing backward analysis.
Figure out what's our drop date that we have to get this done in order for others to get theirs done and get the application on the 3rd.
Usually how it works is we, we tell the regional planning commission, we want to be one of the applicants and they do most of the work, not all of it, but they do most of it.
So if we put that, i- if we make a decision tonight and we charge the chair with telling the regional planning commission that we want to be an applicant, then they could get started on that before our next meeting on the 23rd.
I can't guarantee that. I don't know what else, what other, um, towns have, have approached them.
Yeah, yeah.
Us, whatever.
May get in line.
Yeah.
Okay. So let, let, let me go back because all, all of this is in my head and it's not been expressed and I will try to express it. My point is that, um, if we make a decision tonight, we can at least get the ask to the regional planning commission. If the regional planning commission says, no, we can't do it, then it's a moot point and we just have to figure out how we're going to do the, uh, how we're going to do the work.
Now that you put it that way, yeah.
Well, then at that point, then we, then we've got four weeks to get an application in if we want to.
Uh, right?
On, on our own. Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's, that, that there is.
So if
Are you volunteering?
Um, who are you doing 60 hours a week?
Right. So the, the, the point that I was trying to make was that if the regional planning commission can help us, we would know that by the 23rd. If we need to do, uh, and if they can say, yeah. If we need to do, uh, and if they can say yes, then we would just have to appoint a subcommittee of, I don't know, three members or something to help the, the, uh, regional planning commission finalize that so that it could get, it would make the deadline of November third. Th- that's all I'm saying. And we would know between now and the twenty-third, who are those three volunteers that would give two hours or whatever it takes to sit with the regional planning commission? If the regional planning commission says, no, we don't have any time, then we've got to figure out how, uh, at our next meeting, um, three, four members are going to actually write that the following week and submit it.
Yeah.
Or not. And if the answer is not, then we just have to figure out what we're going to do, uh, with respect to the plan in conjunction with the resources from the regional planning commission. So we have nothing to lose. The way I'm looking at it is we have nothing to lose if we say, yeah, we're interested.
Yeah.
Except if they say, okay, you know, do it, and then we get the, the plan, just being devil's advocate. And, and then the regional planning commission comes back to us and says, okay, well, we have to, you know, because we've got these other towns lined up as well. We need to work with you, like in January through April twenty-six, when we're still trying to finish this thing. The subdivision bylaw.
Okay, so what we say to them then, because you're going to have some kind of a subcommittee, I'm assuming, that knows this, by the time that January deadline would come around, we will have at least finished this. We can have Logan come in, and we can have simultaneous discussions with the regional planning commission about what we think is important here that needs to be cross-referenced with the town plan. Even if it's not fully functional, this body can say, okay, we've got all of these things. We've got to flag that. We're going to have Bill. Because Bill is the be-all and end-all of everything that's cross-referenced, and he will be able to flag him in multiple different colors and say, okay, we need, as the planning commission, to, uh, go through and check all of the things we have questions about with respect to the plan.
Right, and we could do that with Logan. He's, he's, he's very backlog because of the some of his other responsibilities with the new regional plan and all the new mapping and everything. Um, but we could use him for both the bylaw and he does town plans too.
Okay. So you're saying we don't need a grant?
We may not.
Then.
Unless we want wholesale changes and you know, and, and, and another part of the decision is how much public engagement we want to do. Because we'll have to do quite a bit of that if we get the grant. Of course, we want to do public engagement.
So if we don't do the grant, do we, will we need to pay the planning commission, or is it just part of their regular duties?
Usually the town, the town gets the grant and they decide who to sub-grant to, who, who the consultant will be, and it's typically the regional planning commission.
Right, so if we don't get the grant, but we need kind of minor changes, the planning, regional planning would still?
We'd fall under our annual dues and every day, yeah. But the town pays.
Well, in that case, if there's really no advantage to applying for the grant, why should we spend any time putting together an application? In which case.
Well, that's a good question. And so that goes back to how much we want to change the town plan. And if it's wholesale, then a grant like this makes more sense. If it's not, then we still have the regional planning commission's help.
Well, that would mean right now we should be reviewing the town plan. Right? To decide whether we want to do a major rewrite. If we, if we're happy with it, and we only want to tweak a few things, then there's no sense in us applying for a grant.
Can't say I've looked at it since we did the enhanced energy plan.
I guess Sunday afternoon, some reading.
Maybe we should, right, review it and see.
Yeah, just go through it in one meeting. We can skip doing this for one meeting. And just, I mean, we'd really just go through it and just try and identify if there's really anything major that we've got to really. Seems to me, I mean, it seems like we just got done the last one, but that's okay.
Yeah, they just extended it from five to eight years.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that, you're talking about a special meeting, because if we wait until the twenty-third, it's probably going to be too late.
Yeah, it will be too. We could do a special meeting, um.
Or you just review on our own and check back in by a certain date?
All right, if we get together, we got a warrant.
Oh, like we can't over email, just be like, we're good. No, okay.
Really.
Can't do that.
Okay.
So what is everybody thinking?
We really think that we're going to do a major rewrite. I really wouldn't think so.
You know, no mention of it until now.
So.
Worth spinning our wheels to try to get something when it may be all for nothing, that, you know, exists. Yeah, I haven't read the town, I haven't read the plan thing in its entirety, at least remember it. So I need to review that before seeing if we need an overhaul or not.
I mean, there's, there's a new section for housing, but, um, I, I think, I don't think we need the grant to do that. The planning commission would be perfectly capable of guiding us through that. Um, I guess the main difference is if we go for the grant, we can just say, here, you know, give us a new plan. Um, if we don't go for the grant and we, we use them as they're available, we'll be doing some of the work. They'll be making suggestions and.
So once again, doesn't sound like there's an downside to going.
I don't mean this is guaranteed. So we may not get the grant anyway. We can do all that work, so I'm thinking. And with the current climate of everything in this country right now, I don't think grants are.
Want to hang your hat on a grant?
Obvious here, that's all.
Yep, that's true.
Okay, so is there a motion to ask the regional planning commission if we can get in the queue for this year's municipal planning grant?
Dana has to come up with a motion. We're not going to go.
I mean, I think there is consensus not to.
Not to, or it doesn't hurt to? I know, I know, it's, it's.
It really sounds like there's, there's less less a, a smaller chance that we're going to run into a problem if we apply for the grant. Because if we apply for the grant and don't, and once you, I think the way you said it is, we can, we can tell the regional planning commission to, to update the
To help us, to help us, yeah.
Help us do it, yeah.
Yeah, the grant, yeah, the grant money comes to the town, and then the town decides what to do.
So you think we should apply?
I think we should apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Take the most.
Probably something we should run by the select board, right, and?
Well, I mean.
Why do we have to run that by this?
I, I think they're like, this is what we want.
I think it's small, it's probably small enough that it's not going to. I, I mean, if you apply for the grant and get it, they're going to have to be like, oh, we don't want the money. You know, I don't, I don't think you have any pushback from them on it, but.
And the match is ten percent.
Yeah, it's.
Seven hundred dollars, I mean.
Probably be in our current budget.
Even our, yeah, even our budget that's limited, you'd still get that.
So I will move that we apply for the grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Are we done discussing? Or not? Is there further discussion?
Nope.
All those, we'll go with the question then, all those in favor of going for an MPG application with the regional planning commission? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay.
Enemus.
Okay. So interest, that's what we'll do. And so interesting reading here about the Super Walmart. Um, whether, yeah, whether it belongs up there after the demolition or not. And the future of the city. Rutland City, you know, the whole it would develop, it would create the city.
So that would be an opportunity time to put in development right there at the freaking train station.
Yeah.
Right? You take that Walmart, you either turn it into a small kiosk, let small businesses operate out of there, and create housing down there. That way, you know, that, hopefully that can give enough push to actually run the Ethan Allen line between Burlington and here. So people that can't live in Burlington can still work in Burlington and take the train. I mean, that would make that a lot more useful.
I think the parking lot is like the most valuable piece of that whole area.
It's on Saturdays during the summer, right?
Yeah.
I don't think I got a copy of that, Barbara, on my desk.
Here, I.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, any other announcements?
Did you not hand me that, or did you hand that to?
I, I may not have had printed enough of them.
Yeah, that's it.
Look, she just gave it to me.
Yeah.
I don't know, okay.
Okay, let's move down to the minutes of September eleventh.
Most to approve the minutes of September eleven.
Sick.
Okay.
Excellent. I have a couple of observations now that we have it open for discussion. Uh, first observation is, oh, yeah, the first observation is that, um, the minutes showed that there were nine people present, and we had a full complement of uh, planning commission members present, and the note says all members are voting members for this meeting. However, uh, that cannot be true because only seven members are voting members if there are more than a, uh, full complement. So we had two, um, uh, two members who were alternates. One I know is, uh, Norm. So Norm should be, uh, identified as an alternate. And who is our other alternate?
Demetrio.
Oh, and Demetrio. So Demetrio would be the other alternate then, uh, in the, uh, meeting minutes. This evening's minutes, however, or next, uh, uh, next month, should show that there are seven of us present and all are voting members. So that we can get that clarified. We just need to keep track of that each time we meet.
Um, there's something else.
Was there something else? I guess that was it. I thought I had two things, but I don't, I don't see the other one, so.
Okay, who seconded the most? I'm sorry.
Sure.
You're okay with the change?
As amended.
All, any further discussion about the minute of September eleventh? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Right.
Someone want to?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Get your adjourn. Thank you very much.